Mayor.
Shuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's nine yeses and zero absences, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next item is proclamations and presentations. So we have two proclamations and a presentation tonight. And before I read any of them, I just want to say this is evident of the Laramie community. We have a packed house, all for kind of different reasons, but that's pretty awesome. And I think that's not something you see very often these days. So we're going to start with the Clean Water Month proclamation. Whereas the city of Laramie and Albany County have blessed with clean natural water sources and stewardship of our water resources is critical to our community's future. And whereas education and awareness of the opportunities and risks is necessary for that stewardship, the Albany County Clean Water Associates have undertaken to provide a series of events and programs to foster such awareness during October. Therefore, I Andrea Somerville, Mayor of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Clean Water Appreciation Month and would encourage all citizens to take an interest in our water resources here in Laramie and Albany County. So I would like to invite, we have several members of the Albany County Clean Water Associates. We have Sylvia Bagdonas, Jamie E golf, Martin Greller, Marion, I'm going to totally destroy your last name, Marion, I apologize, so I'm just going to skip that one. Nancy Sinolair, Reverend Sally Palmer, Bob Kelly, all with us. And just like to invite, I think you're it, right?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Erdeley.
Erdeley, thank you. My apologies, Mary.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Somerville and council members, I'm Sylvia Bagdonas, representing our group. And the members of the Albany County Clean Water Advocates appreciates the city council signing our proclamation to support October as Clean Water Appreciation Month. We're pleased to announce that we were awarded a grant from the Center for Health, Environment, and Justice to conduct public education about our clean water resources in Albany County. During October, we will be sponsoring various activities, including radio interviews, news stories, a presentation open to the public at the library on October the 24th, and publicity for coffee, tea, and restaurants who participate in our Clean Water Appreciation Month. They will include posters, table tents, water trivia for those who want to encourage protecting our clean water resources. Please take a break during October and visit these sponsors and have a cup of coffee or a beer or a meal and appreciate our wonderful clean water. And I'd like to ask our members to stand up to be recognized.
Thank you. Don't run away yet, you have to come get your proclamation.
Come up and get a picture.
Do you guys want a picture?
Oh, that would be great.
Come on.
Come on up.
Come on.
Have all the members come up.
Clean water, yes.
So I will give this to you, girl. Of course.
You used to have a counter to get tall now.
I do, yes. We have this down now.
Okay.
One proclamation.
Two.
Okay, I took a bunch.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much, we appreciate it.
Our next proclamation is recognition of the 20th memorial commemoration of the murder of Matthew Shepard. This has been quite a hot topic for the community this year in terms of just what we've done and where we've come from in the last 20 years. So here goes. Whereas Matthew Shepard, born in Casper, Wyoming on December 1st, 1975, enrolled in Laramie at the University of Wyoming as a political science and international relations transfer student in 1998, and identified as gay, was active in lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning and other LGBTQ+ student organizations. And whereas Matthew Shepard, known to many as a polite and caring person who cared about the environment, was tragically robbed, beaten, and left for dead on October 7th, eventually succumbing to his injuries on October 12th, 1998. And whereas, on October 16th, 1998, a memorial service was held at St. Mark's Episcopal Church in Casper, Wyoming, with more than 700 people in attendance from around the world, and a community of allies and caring citizens coming together to combat and protest this hateful act of murder, notably including the Angels from the surrounding community and University of Wyoming. And whereas, on October 28th, 2009, the United States of America signed into law the Matthew Shepard and James Byrd Jr. Hate Crimes Prevention Act, with Matthew's mother, Judy Shepard, witnessing the official signing of the act by President Barack Obama. And whereas, to commemorate the 20 years of progress that has occurred since the horrific tragedy of 20 years ago, a series of events and activities has been planned by the Matthew Shepard Memorial Group Subcommittee of the Shepherd Symposium on Social Justice Planning Committee. And whereas, co-chaired by UW Chief Diversity Officer Dr. Emily Minago and undergraduate student Jess Falsing, the Subcommittee has scheduled community and campus programs, including discussions, curriculum, and events remembering Matthew Shepard's impact on Laramie and Wyoming, the University of Wyoming, and the LGBTQ+ community, and the entire country. And whereas, the city of Laramie has led the effort to remember Matthew Shepard's life and legacy through the adoption of Wyoming's first nondiscrimination ordinance in 2015, with many other communities following suit, notably the town of Jackson Hole's adoption of the NDO just this year in 2018. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I Andrea Somerville, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, hereby first acknowledge the tremendous work of a host of groups and individuals that have promoted community initiatives that strive to erase hate and discrimination towards LGBTQ+ community members, including Wyoming Equality, the Shepherd Symposium Committee, the Matthew Shepard Foundation, the University of Wyoming and its student groups, Laramie County Community College Albany County Campus, Laramie Pride Fest, the Wyoming Gay-Straight Alliance Network, and the Associated Students of the University of Wyoming. And I am sure that that list is not all-inclusive, if there has been a number of community groups that have stood up. Two, I affirm the city of Laramie and the University of Wyoming stand together in our collective commitment to stop hate, discrimination, injustice, and violence as we choose to remember the horrific and violent murder of the LGBTQ+ member of our town and gown community. Three, I proclaim October 2018 as Matthew Shepard's 20th Memorial Remembrance Month, a month to remember the potentially deadly outcomes of hate towards any group of people based on sexual orientation, race, ability, gender identity, class, gender expression, immigration status, religion, skin color, and the many other ways in which we are diverse. We would like to recognize Matthew Shepard's life and legacy in the affirmation that Laramie stands now as a stronger community working together to ensure a safe, open, and welcoming community for all residents. So at this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Emily Minago and undergraduate student Jess Falsing to the podium.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Somerville, and thank you, Laramie City Council. In 20 years, Laramie has become a safer and more inclusive space, in part because of Matthew Shepard's legacy. It is a legacy of compassion for those of all social identities, a legacy of building supportive community, and a legacy of hope for continued change. And Laramie City Council has been and is a part of that continued change, with the nondiscrimination ordinance in 2015, your continued support of Laramie Pride Fest, and with this memorial proclamation tonight. And we need memorials and events like this because we do still have work to do. But there is hope. And as a UW student and Laramie community member, your continued recognition and support means so much to me and to many of the people that I know. And with that, I would like to pass it off to my co-chair, Dr. Emily Minago.
Thank you, Mayor Somerville, thank you, City Council. I can't add much more to that. Jess expressed so much of what we feel as a team that planned all the events that happened throughout the month, and also with the kickoff, the President's office, and the LGBTQ reception. So everything has been fantastic, it's been a wonderful collaboration, town and gown collaboration, to show really how the partnership between the university and the community can do great things. So we want to thank you for your support and thank you for your participation. And I would also like to recognize members of the Matthew Shepard Memorial Group, if they would please stand.
If you would please stand, if you're a member of the planning committee. Thank you very much.
We have a number of events still to go throughout the month of October. One of the, should we go through them all?
At least the first one, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we have the Angels Choral Performance coming up on Thursday, October 4th at 7:30. But one of our signature events, I want to make sure that we do highlight that, Grammy Award-winning Conspire, considering Matthew Shepard, that is going to take place on Saturday, October 6th at 7:30 at Laramie High School Theater. And is there anything else you want to highlight?
Just that we have these cards that we can pass out if anyone is interested. They just list our events in our website, and members of the city council have them. And I want to say thank you again, and thank you to everyone who showed up today and support as well.
Absolutely.
So if you have some of those cards, we'd be happy to leave them in the lobby as well for people in general to come get it at City Hall this week, that would be great, if you can leave them. Perfect, thank you. So I would like to invite everybody that has been a member and worked towards this group, and frankly, anybody that's here from the community, I think we have a number of people that have been involved in groups, initiatives, policy stuff throughout the years, if you guys would like to come up. I'd like to present you with the proclamation, and I think we'd like to get a picture of everybody that's here. So please come up.
Mayor, on the sheet, there is one item that has, it's all TBD, TBA here, Laramie Project Film, there's no listing where, when it's going to be held.
It's on our website.
It's on the website?
On the website.
Good.
Yep, it's all good. So I have proclamations for both UW, and then I have one for LCCC as well. So, thank you guys very much. Thank you for all the work you've done, thank you. Invite LCCC to come up as well. Everybody gets to come up here in just a second, so nobody gets out of business. Brady. Thank you very much. Now if everybody would like to come up, take some pictures. Yeah, of course. Hold on, there we go.
Got it? I gotta put my foot against it.
Okay. We look really good under yellow lights, too. Thank you guys very much for all the work that you've done. Thank you. So, before everybody leaves, I just want to say again, thank you very much to all the community members and everybody that was here working to this, and I think we owe you all a round of applause. So our last community item is a presentation and an announcement of Laramie's acceptance into the age-friendly community program. So I would like to invite Professor Bernard Steinman and Tom, is it Laycock? All right, Associate Director of AARP. If you guys would like to come up and share the good news.
Well, good evening, my name is Tom Laycock, I'm the Associate State Director for Communications and State Advocacy for AARP Wyoming, and I'd like to congratulate Laramie on becoming the third community in Wyoming, and the 293rd in the nation to join AARP's network of age-friendly communities. The network of age-friendly communities actually encourage communities to consider how it supports residents with features such as walkable streets, housing and transportation issues, access to key services, and opportunities for residents to participate in community activities. Now, I mentioned Laramie's one of three, the other two are Jackson and Casper. The interesting thing about this is, this is a, it becomes a very grassroots movement. This is something that happens by the citizens of the community, for the citizens. I'll give you a couple examples of what other communities have done. In Casper, they've really kind of thrown themselves into the concept of improving public transportation, and so they've done that somewhat through their bus system. But right now, they're also working on a program that would bring in, that would help volunteers give rides to folks who are leaving the hospital or medical facilities and don't have a ride to get out. That's something the medical community and the 50-plus have both identified as an issue. In Jackson, a couple things that they've done that's kind of unique is they've actually, some of their more tech-savvy members have mapped out all the handicap spaces, both public and private in the community, given that to businesses to put on their website. So they're able to advertise as age-friendly, and you know, Jackson is not a place where you come by parking spaces easily. So this kind of helps out that process. The other one they did, and this is sort of famous in AARP circles, is the poles and buckets concept. And that's very simply, Jackson's a town with a lot of surplus ski poles. Residents were concerned that, you know, when the roads get icy, when they get a little snowy, it can be a little treacherous to get across the street. So they put buckets on each side of a couple streets, put the ski poles in the streets. You, if you're a little bit concerned, you grab the ski poles, you walk across, you put them in the buckets, and you walk off. So it's really grassroots stuff, it's, in each instance, it's local solutions from local folks, and I suspect Laramie's going to find an interesting niche with this due to the strong leadership that's already emerged here. And to that front, I want to introduce you to, and I'm sure you know, Dr. Bernard Steinman from the University of Wyoming. He's a research director at the Wyoming Center on Aging, and he's leading the local age-friendly team along with representatives from the Epson Center for Seniors, Wykowa, and foster grandparents of the Rockies. I've asked Dr. Steinman to give you just a quick overview of where we've gotten, how we've gotten here, and then I have a letter and a certificate of enrollment from AARP that I'd like to hand over to you as well. So, Dr. Steinman.
Dr. Steinman, welcome.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. I'm Bernard, and I'd also like to acknowledge the people who have been working on this with me, if they would stand up.
If you've been working on the age-friendly community initiative, can you stand up?
Stand up, students.
That's wonderful.
We've got a lot of people here. That is a small percentage of the people that have been working on this, so I think this is indicative that we've got this kind of turnout tonight. So you may recall, I hope you recall, I was here in February, which seems like yesterday, but it's been a number of months, to try to make a cogent argument for why we need to be considering aging in Laramie. Over the summer, we made a lot of progress. At that stage, we were just really a seed, but now we are growing into a tiny little plant that we hope grows into a big tree at some point. But we made a lot of progress over the summer. We began our process by having three visioning meetings in the three wards in Laramie, and turnout was outstanding. I would say totally, in total, we probably talked with 50 people altogether. And our goal there was to visualize Laramie in 10 or 15 years with respect to aging in place, the aging of the population. And to that end, we have been working on a vision statement which encapsulates, I think, our goals in a succinct way. This is not, this is a work in progress, so this is just, may change in the future, but here's what we have. "Laramie, a city that is highly livable for people of all ages, where physical and social environment facilitates aging in place." So we hope to see some rendition of that all over the place in the coming months and years. Our visioning meetings centered on the eight domains, which I introduced to you back in February, which include housing, transportation, green spaces, inclusion, and a few other important things that you would probably guess if we were to think about, issues that older people are concerned about. Those discussions were very fruitful, and we have concluded those now. We've moved on into a committee system in each of those areas, and we are looking forward really to working with city government and stakeholders all over the city and getting this thing off the ground and really moving forward with it. The fruits of our labor, I think, have already started to pay off in some ways, although we're not directly responsible for putting the grant into the AARP Community Challenge. We were a part of that, and that ended up netting, or bringing $20,000 to Laramie to work on the park over in West Laramie, the, blanking on what it's called now.
Kauanis.
Kauanis Park. And they're going to be putting in some gardens that are accessible to people who have disabilities. So that is a really great start, and we are looking forward to so, so much more activity in the coming years. We are in the earliest phase, being accepted to the network is really the first step. Next step is to get into our committees and sketch out an action plan, and then in five years, we start, we, well, in the next five years, we implement our plan, and then it starts over again. So this is a process that's constantly evolving, constantly growing, and we hope that it really benefits not just the older population, but really people of all ages in Laramie. So thank you very much for your support, and we do have a certificate for you all. We would like a picture, too, if you could get one.
That would be great. Come on, come on up.
Everybody. We've got people who aren't really concerned about aging issues at this point.
Or they're very concerned about their issues in 50 or 60 years, right?
And they're concerned about their parents.
There we go.
How are you?
Thank you very much. That is amazing. Thank you.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm tall. They have to get it.
Nope. I may have to do this. Hold on.
They're going to be on your map.
There we go. Yes.
Right. You can't be in the back row.
Right. You know, at an angle, and you could get another row right in front. Right.
One, two, three.
Okay, you have another camera.
The many cameras.
We'd like to thank the Boomerang for their photography support.
All right. One, two, three. Looks good.
Awesome, thank you so much. Thank you all for your very hard work. Amazing to be here already. Aren't they just here six months ago?
Yeah.
No way you go?
No public hearings?
All right, so on with the agenda. There are no public hearings, but announcements. City Clerk?
Mayor and City Council, I would like to introduce Ryan Schufeld as our new deputy clerk. He comes to us with a bachelor's in business administration and four and a half years with the city of Laramie. So we're very excited to have him in the clerk's office.
Welcome.
Again, my name's Ryan Schufeld. I was born and raised here in Laramie. I've had, my father worked for the city as well at the water treatment plant, but retired about four years ago. I used to work for a local cabinet shop that's been around for 70 years or so, before I started up at the rec center part-time, and I just kind of kept moving up and applying my degrees more. So I went from part-time maintenance to full-time maintenance to this position now.
Great.
Well, welcome to the city clerk's office, and we look forward to seeing you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Welcome.
City Manager, any other announcements tonight?
Nope, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is disclosures by City Council. Do we have any disclosures this evening? Okay. Item number six, Vice Mayor.
All right, we have no changes to our agenda tonight, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Shuster. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Shuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Onto the regular agenda. Item number 10, Counselor Shuster.
Thank you. The title is "A Resolution Authorizing the Submittal of State Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund (CWSRF) Application to the Office of State Lands and Investments in an Amount Not to Exceed $5 Million" to support the construction of the Laramie Landfill Stage Two Expansion Project. I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-62 authorizing the submittal of a CWSRF application to the Office of State Lands and Investment in an amount not to exceed $5 million for the Laramie Landfill Stage Two Expansion Project, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Dr. Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council. Resolution Number 2018-62 authorizes staff to submit a clean water state revolving fund loan application for the next stage of the Laramie landfill expansion, so stage two. Under this project, we would pursue the design and construction of cells 1B, 2A, and 2B. You might be familiar with the landfill, where the first stage of the project, we constructed cell 1A along with the leach aid collection system. So these three cells will marry those and utilize that leach aid collection system. So we're pursuing three cells at once to minimize the mobilization costs and so forth. If you were out there during construction of the last phase, some of that equipment is just huge, so you don't want to be moving it around very much. So all this does is authorize staff to submit the application. The project is within the budget, it's also been considered in the 10-year financial plan, so the rate impact has already been calculated within the rate structure, so it doesn't result in a rate increase. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, just one question. That would be in a total of four cells, when I figure the one we have right now plus three more, right?
That is correct.
Give us a timeline for what you think, how long this will take care for the waste management for the city.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson, we estimate that this will give us approximately 15 years' worth of service, so five years per cell, additional cell.
So then in 15 years, we'll have to dig another cell.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, for me, it's enough, I'm old enough.
You might not have to worry about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're just going to stop there. Any other questions for Director Smith?
Strike that comment.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item tonight? All right, see none. Dr. Council, any discussion tonight on this item? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Shuster.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Onto item number 11, Counselor Hanson.
That's a good question, because I can't get it right now. Do you have it up?
Um, give me one second.
You don't either.
Nope, I got it right now, pause.
He's got it.
There it is.
All right.
It's still on mine.
I would like to move to approve Resolution 2018-63 authorizing the submittal of a CWSRF application to the Office of State Land and Investments in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 for the North Laramie Sanitary Sewer Trunk Main Project, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Second.
motion and a second by Counselor Shuster. Director Smith.
Again, Resolution Number 2018-63 authorizes staff to submit a clean water state revolving fund loan application to pursue the design and construction of the North Laramie Sanitary Sewer Trunk Sewer Trunk Main Project. There is a concept map in your packet that generally describes the potential alignment of the sewer. One of the tasks of the design engineer, once they're under contract, would be to finalize that alignment and develop easement descriptions and so on and so forth. But conceptually, that's kinda where we're at right now. This future line will provide service to the northern part of the community, mostly undeveloped currently, but there are development plans in the works. But it will also service eventually Cirrus Sky, and it will relieve some capacity off of the existing system as well. So, again, this is within the budget. It's also included in the tenure financial plan, so the rate impact has already been included in the rate structure. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Smith on this item? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, any discussion or comments by council on this item? Counselor Hanson?
At this point, it looks like we didn't have to contribute any share. This is all in the loan right now. Is that correct?
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson, yes, this is 100% loan.
Loan at this point, which of course we have to pay back.
Yes, of course.
All right, City Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Stoner?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor. Thank you. That motion carries. Moving on to item number twelve, Counselor Stoner.
I move that council approve the first reading of original ordinance 1988 titled "The Adoption of the 2018 International Code Series."
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor.
Honorable Mayor, Council?
Welcome.
Thank you. I can't believe people didn't stick around for this.
We should have done this one first, right?
Very exciting.
That's right. A little background with this. As you know, this ordinance will provide the local adoption of the most recent codes approved and adopted by the state of Wyoming Fire Marshal's Office and the Council on Fire Prevention and Electrical Safety in May of 2018. A work session was prepared and presented by the Laramie, to the Laramie City Council in September of 2018 regarding the adoption of the code series. No new codes were slated to be adopted at this time. All have been previously adopted by the Laramie City Council and are referred to, referred by the city of Laramie code ordinances.
So, does anybody have, do you want to talk about specific fire changes?
I'm here, Tim Hoff is also here to talk about any other codes.
However you guys would like to do it.
That's correct.
Should we go through everything before we do questions?
Sure.
No.
We, I think introduced, into your packet, we've introduced the ordinance as it will be written with the changes, including building codes, fire codes, mechanical codes, plumbing codes, and then energy conservation code. I think we listed all those for you.
That sounds good. Counselor Gabriel?
Just curious, on this one sheet that you passed out, some of the updates, does the council have any kind of discretion on, "Well, you know, in Laramie, we don't generally do that," or "We have a little different idea on some of these," or is it all or nothing?
The latitude that we will grant you, or that is granted to us, is to make them more strict. We can't lessen the effect of the codes across the board. So I believe the piece that you're holding there is, was, Tim Hoff had written some building code. So if you have anything specific to that one, I'll let him speak to it. But typically, we just have to, we either have to leave it the way it is or make it more strict.
Thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
Number fifteen, dryer exhaust duct deformation not allowed.
Counselor Schuster, I think that's gonna be for our building inspector.
That's fine. I think we jump it up. I want to know what it means.
That's okay, but we want to finish any questions for the fire changes first, before we do building inspector. So does anybody else have any questions on fire prevention changes?
Mine also would be on that.
We talked about several of those last work session.
Okay.
Okay.
Alternative listed.
All right. Mr. Hoff, you are, the floor is yours.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I can speak to that. I compiled these as a list of what may be of interest to you and the citizens of Laramie. These are the ones that I picked out that are most significant. That particular one is a minor change, but it, it happens almost daily. When a dryer duct is installed in a narrow wall, they, the mechanic may deform that duct to fit in the wall. That is not allowed anymore. It has to stay round or oval, however the shape coming from the factory.
Don't be a brood on it.
Exactly. You can't take your hammer to it anymore. All right, very simple. Thank you.
Counselor Polikus?
I got another question.
She forgot me.
I apologize, Counselor.
I'm aware that the snow load for roofs in Laramie, the live load, has been thirty pounds per square foot for many, many, many years, as long as I can remember. I'm also aware that in other places, it's much greater than that. The question I have is ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the time, it makes sense to me. Every other year or so, we get these heavy, heavy storms, heavy, wet snow in great amounts. I have to believe that at that point in time, that snow load on that roof is greater than thirty pounds per square foot, although it's only a one-time incident. Has there ever been a consideration, has there ever been any testing done or a consideration to increase that snow load? Because it would seem to me that a one-time event can do just as much damage to the structural roof as if it was many times throughout the year.
It is my understanding that these are calculated on an average basis, and I agree with your one-time scenario.
Yeah.
But there is a safety margin built into these. I honestly don't know how they're calculated. Engineers, you know, calculate these loads on average using maps and hundred-year averages, fifty-year averages, that kind of thing. I honestly don't know how they're calculated, but I, I don't know if they take into consideration, you know, one-time events. All I can say is that they usually have a safety margin built in. I mean, engineers and architects.
Do you know what that safety margin is?
I do not.
Ten percent, twenty percent?
I would imagine it's between those two numbers, between ten and twenty.
So as a follow-up, have we ever had any issues with not necessarily roof failure, but roof deterioration as to structure-wise because of these one-time events, only a thirty pound, only a thirty pound per square foot snow load?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
None reported anyway, as long as I've been there.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. In our attachment on, that would be page two as a matter of fact, under amended climatic and geographic design criteria table, and I'm getting to the same thing that was just asked, roof load is highlighted in yellow. And so I presumed that is a change from a previous, why is it highlighted then?
It is added. Before that, the roof load was not in the table. It was calculated off the live load and the ground load.
Okay.
And so they decided, well, let's clarify this and just put the roof load in the table.
So it's.
Which is, it makes sense, you know.
It's no change.
It's no change, it's just been added.
Yeah, because I noticed that was the, basically, except for some numerical changes, the only highlighted item in the, in the whole table. So I thought it was changed. And that's, that's a good question. Then I have just one other observation, because I just saw something on the Denver news about tiny houses because of the market these days and the affordability, et cetera. And I noticed item twenty-two, appendix Q, says minimum requirements for tiny houses. Can you give us some idea what the minimum requirements are, that they have running water or something like that?
What they, this is a new appendix.
Yeah.
Because it's never been addressed before.
Yeah.
And that's why it was added. The minimum requirements are not less than a normal house.
Okay.
It's, they allow for maybe greater stair heights because of space constraints, things like that. Skylights for ventilation. There's actually requirements for ventilation are different, so they allow skylights to be used as ventilation. I can't think of any others right off the top of my head, but it finally addresses these smaller houses so that we have some guidelines to go by. Right now, we're just kinda shooting from the hip. We're going, well, I don't know if that's, you know, acceptable or not, because there's no guidelines. So this at least gives us something to work with.
That's, that's very interesting, because I thought, I saw a pictorial presentation on the Denver television about these small houses. It was really exciting to see how they constructed these smaller houses that are affordable for people of lower income.
Right.
And I think it's something we probably need to look at for Laramie, because we are, of course, always in dire need for housing that is affordable. So I was interested, interested to see this added here.
I think as you, as time goes on, you're gonna see more and more of this, because now that the code addresses it, everybody's saying, well, we've got something to work with. And Denver's accepting these codes, you know, the.
Just like.
Just like we are, so they're on the same series.
That's the same.
All through Colorado and, well, all through the United States, basically.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Is there anything else that you would like to share or had planned to present on tonight?
I don't have anything at this time.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Johnson, anything else from staff on this before we go for a public comment? Is there any public comment on this item tonight? Please come forward. Welcome. And as always, if you can introduce yourself for the record and sign the sheet when we're all done. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Jessica Nada. It's good to see everybody on council tonight and mayor. Where, the specific comment on this particular ordinance is, where can we access the PDF with those new adoptions in the code? Is that PDF available for public?
We will make sure that staff can answer that question for you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other discussion?
I just have a comment.
Oh, please. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment?
No, I was gonna ask, can we make a public comment on a different issue?
Not, not on this one. So for public comment, it has to be specific to this one, and then we'll have public comment in just a couple minutes for that. Counselor Polikus?
Comment I want to make is, I've been, I've been part of these, not part of the code changes, but I've been, I've witnessed code changes for many, many years, obviously had to deal with them in construction and so forth and so on. I am so impressed this time around, this is the first time that, and maybe I'm wrong, but this is the first time I can remember that we actually have code changes that are, are starting to consider alternate methods and starting to consider changes in building structures such as basements that are now oftentimes ten feet versus only eight feet. And I'm referring to things such as not having to have a landing because your basement is ten feet, a landing on your stairs because the basement's ten feet rather than eight feet. And I just go through this, and there's an awful, using fifteen amp breakers for a one fixture in the kitchen, things like that. This is the first time I've seen common sense being applied to the code rather than making it more restrictive. And I see our building, building department nodding their head to that also. So this is a great change in my mind. It makes a lot of sense to start considering easier ways to do things that do not harm the safety of our, of our buildings and our community. So it's nice to see.
Any other comments or discussion here on first reading? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Hanson?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor. Thank you. And I just want to remind council, because of the technical nature of this, if there's anything that you have questions on or considering amendments on or something like that, please get with city staff in the next week. So we run those through city staff. All right, our next item is item number thirteen, public comments on non-agenda items. This is your time. Come on up. So we, so if you can introduce yourself for the record.
I will.
And we have a five-minute time limit on public comments.
Good. I will be shorter than that.
That's all right. And then there's a sign-in sheet behind the clerks if you could sign when you're done.
Sure. Thank you. So Mayor Somerville and members of the city council, my name is Steve Jimenez. I'm a journalist, and I would like to, first of all, thank you for the proclamation that was ordered today in the name of Matthew Shepard. What I'd like to tell you is that I have been, I'm a New Yorker. I have been visiting Wyoming for almost thirty years. In the year 2000, within months of Aaron McKinney's trial, I came to Laramie to begin work, investigative work as a journalist into the Matthew Shepard murder. My sources included the former county attorney, Cal Rurka, and many, many law enforcement sources, including Lieutenant Ben Fritz and Flint Waters, who was involved in that case, Mark Beck, who worked on the case. I've spoken certainly with Mitch Cushman and a number of others. I am here because, number one, I will be part of a panel event next Tuesday, October ninth, at the Hilton Garden Inn. The title of this, of this event is Why Truth Matters. And what I would like to say to you is, I'm a gay man, okay? I have been out as a gay man since the 1970s. And I have, in the course of my work here in, in Laramie over the years, come to realize the degree to which crystal meth and, and the drug epidemic that has been a problem in this area for some twenty years was a crucial part, okay, of what happened in the Matthew Shepard murder. If you look at, you know, look me up online, I've written a book about the Shepard case. I will just, just very briefly say, I am an Emmy award-winning television producer. The work I did on this case for ABC News 2020 won a Writers Guild of America Award, an award for investigative reporting from the Northwestern University, Mongerson, the Northwestern University Medill School of Journalism, and others. So I just am here, number one, to invite you personally to come to this event on the ninth. Part of the panel will be Trudy McCraken, who was the mayor at the time that the Shepard murder happened, Reed Eckhart, the former editor of the Wyoming Tribune-Eagle, Malcolm Lazin, a former federal prosecutor and a leading gay activist in the country, Dr. Chuck Dennison, who lives here in Laramie, who is a renowned forensic psychologist, who was an Episcopalian minister here at the time that the case happened. Why am I here? I am here because I believe truth matters, that forgiveness and reconciliation matter, and that in order to have true forgiveness and reconciliation, that we have to understand what the truth is. If you look me up online, you will see that a small group of people has smeared me for a number of years. a number of years for daring to tell the truth about this case. I continue to spend a great deal of Laramie, and I continue to report on this. I encourage you to be open to looking at the truths of what happened with this case, okay? At the very same time that this case happened, a crystal meth epidemic began in the gay community in cities like New York, LA, and San Francisco. It was tied to higher rates of HIV transmission, and for me, as someone who survived the AIDS epidemic, when the crystal meth epidemic came, I was frightened because I saw more people, the possibility of more people getting sick and dying. So I'm just here to bear witness to truth. I have many, many friends in the community. In the course of my research, I've interviewed over 135 people. There is not another major nonfiction book that is out there on this case other than the one that I wrote. So I'm asking you to, in the spirit of truth, okay, and goodwill, to please open yourselves to what is true. The New York Times had a story earlier this year, and it said, "Meth, the Forgotten Killer is back, and it's everywhere," okay? We know that a heroin epidemic followed meth, and we also know that the opioid crisis followed on the heels of that. Can we please learn the lessons of the past and not see not just more LGBT people hurt, okay, but all people, all citizens of Laramie and all citizens of Wyoming? So I ask that, you know, in a spirit of profound good faith, and I hope some of you will come to the event on October 9th at the Hilton Garden Inn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What's the time for the event?
The time will be at 7:00 PM, and I will add that Russell Henderson, one of the two men convicted of the murder, will appear on Zoom live from Torrington Prison to answer community questions. So this is the first time he's had a chance to talk to the community for 20 years, so I think it will be very interesting to hear what he has to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment tonight on any item? Please come forward.
I'm going to sign in really quick.
Actually, you can come up and talk to us if I sign in when you're done. Yep.
Somebody already signed me in, actually. So, from the last one. I just wanted to make the comment and let everybody know that I did hear back from Steve Cook from YDOT, and his response was that they tested the paint on the Clark Street Viaduct 4 lead in six locations, and they all came back negative. So thank you for passing along that information, and I look forward to seeing where the repurposing of that area goes as you move forward. So thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number 14, Consideration of Future Council Work Session Topics. Does anybody have any requests this evening? Councilor Schuster?
I've had a couple of bars talk to me that when they apply for an outdoor venue and then got denied, that we keep their money too. And I'd kind of like to talk about that because it's, I kind of got jumped on it, and I said, yes, I would bring it up.
Speaker?
Councilor, are you wanting a work session or would you just like an answer to the question?
I already know the answer to the question. I'd like a work session on it to see if we want to keep their money if we deny them a venue.
Currently in code, we don't have provision for refund, so that's.
So that's what I want to talk about. Should we have a revision for a refund if we say, no, you can't do it, or should we just continue keeping their money?
Also, do we have support from somebody else? We need two council members. Good? Okay. Right.
And how much money are we talking about?
80 bucks, I think it is, isn't it?
$75. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Any other requests tonight on work sessions? Okay. Let's move on to item number 15, Councilor Hanson.
I move that council adjourn to executive session regarding personnel according to Wyoming statute, paragraph 16-4-405A, Roman numeral 10.
Second. Second by Councilor Gabriel. All those in favor?
And for the public, we are not coming back.
We are not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned for executive session on personnel.